Let everybody know in our hopes and prayers are with the families that are affected by tragic events with Silicon Life Saver. We know the situation, the families with Adam Russell and Mark Anne and the nurses still in hospital. Praying for them and thinking about them during this difficult time and all the first responders going over there. Stand in place of allegiance. I roll call Lee Perry, Tiffany Nix, Nate Brewer, Marty.
Here.
All right, the catcher's given by Chapman Martel better earlier. Report from Mayor Hogg.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the moment, as we stated, we ask for your prayers with the three first responders. Sixty-three-year-old Mark Anne Pilate and forty-three-year-old Adam Russell, registered nurse killed in a medevac helicopter. Benny, Amanda Daniels survived and is in stable condition. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of these three special first responders dedicated to saving lives and making a difference. God rest their souls. We have a proclamation stating preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on environmental among people throughout the community. Child milk treatment occurs when people find themselves in a stressful situation without community resources and do not know how to cope. The majority of child abuse cases stem of situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. Child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children but also increase the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease and obesity, and risky behaviors such as smoking. All systems should become involved in supporting families in raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community as a whole. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Silicon, do hereby declare Department of Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention, Children's Trust Fund, and Preventive Child Abuse Alabama hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I call upon all citizens of our community, agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our effort to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, we need an adopted agenda tonight, and with that, it's gonna be removing item number nine, we'll address that at the next meeting. So may I have a motion?
I make a motion, adopt the agenda.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. You know, approve minutes of the regular city council meeting until March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Approve minutes of the regular work session until March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, may I have a motion? Marty, second.
Second.
Lee Perryman, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved, number one, let us remove. Ten, actions necessary to approve the request from Mayor Joe Tygel to change the current election budget positions and all associated records to reflect a name change from code of enforcement department or building services department, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Actions necessary to approve provisions to the City's Silicon bank policy. That's got to be reposted after discussions of the work session, we'll move that. Action is necessary to accept the recommendation of Mayor Joe Tygel to promote David Michael Weston to the position of Building Services Director effective with pay period beginning April eighth, twenty twenty-three, and to establish salary proposition at grade AO twelve, step three, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Action is necessary to promote Alexandra M. Lambert to the position of City Clerk and Treasurer effective with a pay period beginning in early twenty twenty-three and to establish a salary for this position at grade AO twelve, step three, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
Four yays, one nay, motion passes. Action that is necessary to approve resolution designating signatories for checks of City Silicon Bank accounts and for conducting other financial transactions on behalf of the city. Approval appeals resolution zero-one dash twenty twenty-three approved on January fifth, twenty-three. It's considered we have a new resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty-three, may I have introduction?
Oh, I see.
Marty. Marty, any else with more?
Is this the one we left to prove the change of feelings?
Yeah. Um, are to take action, we need to suspend the rules, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Now, a motion to approve.
Motion.
All motions, Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor? All in favor?
Yea.
One and make a rule.
Four and one, motion passes. Action that is necessary to.
Four and one, Ms. Nix is a nay.
Okay, did you.
We unanimously suspended rules.
And then you got nay to suspend the rules.
No, I voted yes to suspend the rules and I voted no to the actual action.
Okay.
That's right, Mary.
Yes. All right, action that is necessary to approve resolution authorizing the use of a backslash signature of Mayor Joe Tygel for checks drawn on City Silicon Bank accounts. Approval appeals resolution four dash twenty twenty-one approved on January twenty-fifth, twenty-one. It's considered we have a new resolution of twenty dash twenty twenty-three, may I have introduction?
Oh, yeah.
Nate Brewer, you have. Uh, take actions, meaning we need to suspend the rules, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved, now motion to approve.
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Action is necessary to accept the recommendation of Mayor James Tygel to reclassify animal shelter manager position from grade SM zero-four to grade AO eight? No, step up, just AO eight. Correct, what's more? All right, it's two AO eight. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
Nope.
Four and one, motion passes. Action is necessary to accept the recommendation of Mayor James Tygel to remove reporting and supervisory responsibilities of the animal shelter from street department and to establish the animal shelter as a separate department with reporting duties to Mayor Hogg, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Now, appointment to the Board of Education, provided your term of solicitors expire in June twenty twenty-three. We will have one extension, Nate Brewer, due to conflict of interest being the employer. Uh, I now open the floor and call for nominations.
I nominate Golden Twymann.
Perryman nominates Golden Twymann. Lee, go ahead.
I nominate Coach Eddie Barnador.
Marty nominates Eddie Barnador.
And I want to nominate Blaine Green.
Tiffany Nix nominates Blaine Green. Hearing no other nominations, I call for nominations, be close, may I have a motion? Just stay up. Lee Perryman, second.
Second.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays, that'd be a four oh, correct, Kim? All right, close the floor, call on votes of nominations, uh, first, those in favor of Golden Twymann?
Yea.
Yea.
I'll do a roll call. Lee Perryman?
Yea.
Tiffany Nix?
Yea.
Uh, Marty?
Nay.
And they. So that is a two-two for. No majority there, so we got a second nominee, those in favor of Eddie Barnador. Lee Perryman?
Yea.
Tiffany Nix?
Yea.
Marty?
Yea.
Yea for me, two-two. Now we know majority, so now we move to the third nominee, Blaine Green, may I have a roll call vote here, Lee Perryman?
Yea.
Tiffany Nix? Marty?
Nay.
Nay. With no majority votes, we have to push this to the following meeting, correct? So we'll have to discuss and go over this again because there was no majority here. Reading of the minutes, Mayor Hogg's appointment of Jeff Turner to the plan of commission for the six-year term to expire January twenty twenty-nine, no council actions required. Action is necessary to approve request from Police Chief Kelly Johnson to purchase up to four, which, uh, twenty twenty-three for its four police crews from St. Edward's, Borl Lincoln, at the state bid price of thirty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-four each, plus all related equipment for a total estimated vehicle cost sixty-one thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars and eighty cents per vehicle on these sources, capital correction.
Plus, part of the funding from?
Part of the funding, yes, from.
From the sale of our fourth street, um.
Property.
Property. Just say general finances, that's where we're at, so.
I put partial funding from the sale of the water tower property and an additional funding from capital improvement.
Because you only need to true that up with the vehicles and everything else, and it should have worked.
Okay. So the wholesale price of that go into an inventory, leftover comes from capital?
If, if you were.
Yes, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Action is necessary to approve request from Police Chief Kelly Johnson to purchase K nine K system at a total cost of forty-one hundred eighty-five dollars from emergency lighting by Haydale L. C. Funding will come from capital approval, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Tiffany Nix, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Action necessary to approve request from Police Chief Kelly Johnson to purchase teen car video system for K nine vehicle at a total cost of six thousand and forty-two dollars from Governor Rick Corwin, and funding also capital improvement, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Tiffany Nix, second.
Second.
Lee Perryman, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Action is necessary to approve payment according to civil service board ruling to T. B. A. percentage of the amount of ten thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty cents, plus six percent simple interest per annum, uh, which comes out to two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-six cents for a total of ten thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-six cents. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Lee Perryman, second.
Second.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Action is necessary for accounting specialist Sandy Sorsen to attend the certified governmental accounting technician budgeting course in Tuscaloosa, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Registration fee of one fifty, additional expenses for meals, lodging, and mileage will incur. Total estimated expenses for Sorsen are four hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-four cents, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Action is necessary to approve travel training expenses for firefighters Andrew McLean and Clint Payton to attend the Alabama Fire College Rescue Technician Road Two Course hosted by L. C. Fire Department, May twenty-third through twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, registration fee of two hundred and forty each, additional expenses for lunches and use of a city provided vehicle will be incurred. The full carpool, total estimated expenses for McLean and Payton are two hundred and eighty-five each, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Action is necessary to approve travel and training expenses for firefighter Mike, Matt Carpenter and Brett Autry to attend the Alabama Fire College Operator Aerial Course hosted by the Anniston Fire Department, May twelfth, eighth through twelfth, twenty twenty-three. No registration fee, expenses for lunches and the use of a city provided vehicle will be incurred, total estimated expenses for carpooling and Autry are seventy-five each. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
Yea.
Action is necessary to approve travel and training expenses for firefighter Rene Tapley to attend the Alabama Fire College Fire Instructor, Fire Instructor in Charge Course hosted by the Oxford Fire Department, April seventeenth through the twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Registration fee of three fifty, additional expenses for lunches will be incurred, and Tapley will carpool with total estimated expenses for Tapley are four twenty-five, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Tiffany Nix, second.
Second.
Lee Perryman, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Action is necessary to approve travel and training expenses for firefighter Andrew McLean to attend the Alabama Fire College Rescue Technician Road One Course hosted by the Anniston Fire Department, April seventeenth through the twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. No registration fee, expenses for lunches will be incurred, McLean will carpool with Autry and Byrd, total estimated expenses for McLean are seventy-five each, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Marty, all in favor?
Yea.
Ms. Nix?
Hey, I have a roll call.
I see it says with, uh, like on twenty-seven, it says Tapley, and it's gonna go with, uh, tolling, but we didn't approve tolling anywhere, did we?
Y'all approved them.
Last meeting, no, there. All right, action is necessary to approve March counts payable invoices received to the date in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-two cents, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Lee Perryman, second.
Second.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor?
Yea.
All yays approved. Now it's time for anyone to address the council, no action will be taken at this meeting, before you speed come to the microphone, set your name and address for the record prior to addressing the council. Go ahead, sir, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Hello, good evening.
It's all, it's all.
It's all.
Good evening, Shaquita King, eight ninety-five South Hammett Avenue. My concern this evening is, um, potholes in the roads. Um, Saturday, I think it was an issue, uh, west, between West Park and South Hammett, um, it was barricaded off for several hours. They came and patched it up, but I've been living at their residence for almost twenty years, and it's been, you know, never done to these roads, they're getting worse. Um, on the West Park, um, on the Cannon, South Cannon, and also the road, I think it's Henry Street right there by the hospital there. I, I go there frequent during the week, and I don't understand why, you know, these roads be right there at the hospital, you know, people go come in and out daily, on a daily basis to the gym, you know, to the cafeteria, to the hospital, the road should be in better condition. So that's what I would like to address this afternoon, you know, hopefully we can get some things resolved, uh, we should have the funds enough, you know, to get these things done.
Well, I, I will tell you this, uh, we, we do have every street in the city listed on a priority list, uh, worse to, not so bad, you know, every, every one of them is pretty much bad, and ones we have not paid in that first wave several years ago, and there, there are plans in place to make a big payment project and subsequent additional year-to-year or every year projects, little projects after that, to make sure all of them kept maintained and remain in good, good condition actually do fix.
Ms. King, did you give, um, did you give him your list? Um, did you give him the list that you were talking about, because maybe it can be something, maybe Reed can, I don't know if there are some of those millings left, so maybe we can, um, talk with Reed to get him to go over there and put some of those milling into those potholes until we can get the road completely fixed.
Mr. Campbell, would you raise your hand, please?
Just talk, talk to him in a few hours, I mean.
Okay. I'm sorry, Reed, I need to see.
Anyone, sir?
I'm Thomas Combs, uh, you know, uh, I'm, I was living around the twenty-nine, but we're like, and, uh, I've got a lot of issues with this, we haven't had a license with these kids until town. Are you trying to figure out anything, the police, or anything, or y'all just letting it flow? Because I come from a family of police officers, and you all should know as well as anything what's going on, we're worried, and these ladies right here, these babies trying to do something, I don't see y'all.
But we're not police officers, we got the police team. Please, please, wrap behind us.
I know that, but still, you're a part of it, we're all of us to discuss it, and we're, I was talking to a lot of people who wondered, when are we gonna start having this, uh, set to where the officer, I know he don't have enough people, but we wanna get to where all these schools have an officer, I know you only have one, I knew one myself was one school here, we don't wanna be like natural. And you know that, we, we're very vulnerable, like I said, I helped my family's FBI, I told him for DEA, the whole works, but.
Also, just to piggyback off what you said, we just recently passed a four hundred thousand dollar pay plan to increase to just for the police department, for them to get more officers that they're down, and some, and add different task forces and things like that, that Kelly has, has worked in and mentioned to us, and we're, we're on our way.
I mean, we need that.
And since he gets fully staffed, SROs are going back, when he gets, when he gets enough.
Approves that salary, you're right.
Because the school system pays nine months, and then the city pays another three months, because they're twelve-month employees, so that, that isn't the worst.
I mean, it needs to be before we end up being on TV.
I agree.
And I mean, because all these little kids, like I said, these, these children right now, I figure at least y'all be all discussing with the police what's going on here, which I kinda already know, but I'm just saying, we need to get this town back for the people.
Yes.
And it's getting old, because everybody just washes away, we all don't. I mean, we're praying for, is anybody consulting, the families that lost a child in it? I mean, has, I mean, that's, that's something, I mean, I'm trying to address it, not just the police, council, all, let's be known to people, addressing the ill comfort of those who lose their kids.
I think we've been proactive by paying the police more, and, um, Kelly's been very proactive with this by establishing the street crimes unit that's been patrolling extra and stuff, I mean, there's, we've, we've passed that four hundred thousand dollar plan, we are being very proactive.
We've also been very proactive working with Central Alabama Crime Stoppers, we've gotten rewards up to, uh, seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars, we don't talk about that, because there are a lot of anonymous donors, we don't want to receive credit, so there's new signs that's gone up, there are new reward programs that SROs can use to be able to help kids who also report things that they know, uh, and there are just a lot of things we can't talk about in public that we're working on that, uh, we think are making a difference, the city has been very successful just in the last few weeks, uh, with so many issues.
And some of us, and for kids as well, you know, we don't parade everything we do for, you know, the public to acknowledge.
You should come out with it afterwards, I mean, you're telling me something I already know from history, I told you from the background, I've been around the council.
And, Mr. Tom, we, when you say everybody knows, I mean, everybody knows the street cop, and then you look at social media, so the same stuff you know, we know, the police know, but until somebody say they saw it, I mean.
Yeah, I'm just saying, the comfort of those who lose a family member in it, I don't want it to spread to where a lot of these innocent people out here get caught in something that, you know, they care about the town. I mean, there's people can't be here because of work, and I've talked to a lot of them, you know, I work right here, but, uh, you know, we're just trying to find out, I mean, is there anything across, because I mean, I know you can't tell me things from my head, but some of these people lose their children.
Yeah, while they would just address everything that we're doing, and obviously there's active investigation going on, and his police officers are working around the clock, so we're trying to be, we're not letting any rock being stolen be unturned, we're starting to do everything, trying to figure things out.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, get out, no one, pray in front, nine twelve, Air to drive. Uh, no, I spoke earlier, a couple weeks ago, but the problem or the solution don't totally lie with the police officers, they doing all they can. And, and I understand, Mr. Crum, it's, it's you all gotta provide something for these youth to, to take them off the streets.
Mr. Crum, we understand that that's part of the building, another recreation center, and we're also giving back the property from the Burley Collins Center to the housing authority for them to rebuild, reopen, and have places for them to do things.
We, we need something like now.
We can't just make something appear, we're steadily working on it, what do you suggest?
That community center is in the projects, or the housing authority. There need to be some action going on right now to get those kids back in that wreck.
We're gonna put them in a faulty foundation building where the roof might fall over, we're gonna get in, our housing authority will get their engineers and architects in there to build it up where they can be successful.
Matter of fact, Sam Royster went in there last week with his guys getting ready to, uh, put a roof on and bleachers and clean up the floors, so if y'all wanna know the process of that, you can reach out to him at the housing authority, we turn that fully over to him, now, look, I'm gonna ask a question, and I probably shouldn't ask it, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, Mr. Crum. You know, we have, uh, different municipalities that's around it, and they have recreational centers, and they have pools, and they have basketball courts, and some of them win state championships, and some of them do this, some of them do that, and they still have what we have going on here. So it can't be just the kids have nothing to do, because the Parks and Rec director's sitting right there, and he's got a list of things that's going on at the wreck department now. So that the kids not having anything to do can't be the sole cause of. And I didn't say it was, I didn't say it was. Now, but that, but that's the way it's coming off, Mr. Crum.
But no, and you, I.
That's the way I'm taking it, I'm taking the wrong guy, I apologize.
Well, you did, and I said your apology, because I just said that the police department is not the total solution to it, that's what I said to you earlier.
No, but you're telling me that the kids have nothing to do.
And that's what I talked with these kids.
I understand, I went with them every day.
You went with them every day?
I worked seven thirty to, well, I worked six to two thirty with them every day, from day through twelve.
And they don't tell you that?
Absolutely, they say, Mr. Nate, where'd our pool go? Mr. Nate, what does this say? I, I get it, because we ain't got five hundred thousand dollars, just gonna fix swim pool, we had five hundred thousand dollars, swim, swim pool that done been fixed.
Well, well, you all have the stamina that, that you all can result, use some of that fund to own debt, you got grants up there, you got plenty money available for this.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm gonna leave it there, but.
Dave offers act, like tons of after-school activities for kids and stuff also.
We need to get something for the kids.
I, I agree with you.
Dave had lots of outlets as well for after-school and other activities for the kids along with the parks and their.
It's ongoing, we had, we had just given them over the housing authority their buildings to rebuild it all, and we have the parks and red going park by park to revitalize their, in our city parks, to make them easier access and, and more viable for people to play at, and we're working, we can't snap our fingers and have a, a gym open running, it is an ongoing process.
But everybody knows that, Charles, and I'm not saying this because I don't want you to take it personally, my deal is from Ju Court, I mean, but, but what I'm saying is, everybody does have the same opportunity. I mean, it's not, and it, the parents are gonna have to take some sort of responsibility, I can't make the parents do anything, I mean, I have fourteen, I'm just saying, I have two kids, yes, they know, and all of our kids go to the same school, like, everybody's taking this personal, Dallas, I mean, Tom, we, we knew these kids, we grew up with these kids, even, even all the kids that are in jail, like, these have been our kids, but what I'm saying, and I do take it personally, because everybody always say, we need education, we need, uh, after-school programs and this and that, okay, I got all that sorted, we helped me, we had computers on there, we got internet put over there, everyone, who showed up? Nobody. Even where all the after-school programs we had, you seen the same five people, but then when, when the stuff go away because there's no help, everybody wanna come up here and blame everybody, what, what everybody up when it's time to help? You gotta come and help, but this is what, this is what really makes me so mad, everybody wants a reward, but nobody wants a responsibility.
Right.
Somebody gonna have to show up and help, I mean, and I still gotta take care of my people, I know it, and I still gotta take care of my children too.
Now, don't get me wrong, I was just asking, do, do the family or the kids know about?
Yes, they know, I'm at school, you know how many kids I'm feeding, and I do take it in person when people come up here and say, well, what have been with your kids? Hell, it is my kids, I gotta feed these kids, I'm giving kids rides. I mean, we, we taking responsibility in the community, in the community, but these parents gonna have to take responsibility, and when people see stuff, they gonna have to start telling it, they gonna have to tell it, that's why, like you said, they have these things in place with the crime stoppers. It's an anonymous thing, I gave you them flyers, and I do try to stay out of stuff because I know how I get, and I, and I'll say things that people don't like, but there's an anonymous app where people can download it, and they can say, they can see somebody breaking in the library, you can text to that app, hey, I see somebody breaking in the library in Silicon, nobody never know you told it, the police can go.
Can we start putting those up there, so?
Yes, yes, and I also have some more signs, I've been spending these months, I got some more signs, some yard signs to put out in front of places, I'm getting approvals to put the signs out, so we, we do care. I mean, we do, like, we do, and it's personal, it's very personal, like, I gotta set up a, to my kids.
Personal to me.
Yeah, and even if I could swim a pool, you know what my kid told me, that's what my daughter asked me, she said, you been on that city council how many years, why we ain't got no pool, what are you doing down there? That's what my kid said to me, we're gonna try to get it done.
Get it done, but, you know, everything takes time.
Yes, but it takes people too, it takes people, it's gonna take people.
People on my Facebook, hey, if you want to know something, come down here and voice your opinion.
But I'm gonna say this too, and I'm gonna say this.
Yeah, I'm gonna get a one C hour four years ago, four years ago.
We've been trying to get stuff, we've been trying to get this done for, since, since I came, the only reason I even wanted to come back was to try to get this community centered, but this, but this is another thing I'm gonna say too. We had a pet room tonight, we got a pet room, and you've been here, and you've been here at these council meetings, you don't see anybody at these meetings. But we've been, we've been trying to get stuff, we've been trying to get this done for, since, since I came, the only reason I even wanted to come back was to try to get this community centered, but this, but this is another thing I'm gonna say too, we had a packed room tonight, we got a packed room, and you've been here, and you've been here at these council meetings, you don't see anybody at these meetings until they mad, that's how you know when people pissed off, when you got a packed room, don't nobody never show up until they mad.
When I pulled up, that's what I said, I said, mm.
Somebody mad.
That's the problem, that is the problem, people wants it done, but they do not want to come together and get, and get it done, that's what I specified, that is the problem. You want your voice heard, you want something done in the community, come, come down here, get it, get your voice heard.
That's right, and we appreciate those who do, so we, we know where each other stands, y'all know what we're doing, we're an open book up here, we, we, time to time, and going through everything we say, everything we've done, is on the agenda, we pass the housing authority granting in their property back to do what they're gonna do with it.
That's, that's a good thing.
You show up, you, you, you learn a lot when you come to these meetings, and I, I know you know that.
Come on down here.
Our Zen knowledge.
And Mr. Charzad, I think Sam will send out some, uh, flyers in the mail to the, uh, Drew Court residence to let them know what's going on with the, uh, Burley College.
Okay.
I understand.
I know.
I understand.
So that's a good thing.
Yes, we appreciate you coming.
Lastly, I'm gonna read into the minutes, um, from our interim.
Wait a minute, I think it's on.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, while I come to these meetings even when I'm not mad, but, um, I am right now, so, um, my husband's Tim Epperson, and he was a retired firefighter here, can you hear me?
I, I need to make sure Lynn can hear you, because I think I know what you're doing.
Yep, um, so my husband was retired firefighter here in Leucaga, and he's recently had a ruling by the Civil Service Board, where y'all tonight approved the ten thousand, six hundred and seventy six dollars and eighty cents that he was owed for benefits, and there was supposed to be a six percent interest per annum for three years, the calculation that y'all approved tonight is incorrect, um, I don't know who Lynn went to, to get that calculation, um, there's a simple calculator online, you can Google, that'll tell you what that interest rate should have been, or what that total amount should have been. So, it's real simple, it's ten thousand, six seventy six, eighty, times point zero six, times three years, and it's gonna come up to nineteen hundred and twenty one dollars and eighty, eighty, eighty two cents, you add that to the ten thousand, six seventy six, eighty, and then you're gonna get twelve thousand, five ninety eight, sixty two, I would like to ask y'all to amend that, what you approved tonight and reapprove it.
We understand, thank you for your concern, we'll address it with our city attorney and get back.
I'd like for it to go ahead and happen tonight.
It's not going to, no. Thank you. I'll lastly like to read into the minutes, uh, from our interim city clerk treasurer, uh, tonight is the last meeting I will attend, as your interim city clerk treasurer, I want to thank each and one of you for the bone confidence you placed in me, when you appointed me in this position over two years ago, now, after twenty seven years of service, in the city of Leucaga, I will be retiring effective May one, twenty twenty three, and look forward to new opportunities before me in the future, uh, Kim Mars, Kim, we appreciate everything you've done in twenty seven years since I've been here.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. No further business to discuss, a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Laura Heath, on the favor?
Yay.
All yeas, adjourned at sixteen.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, sir.